The really important question Jude is can you hear me? Oh, good.
Mrs. McCullough, everybody is here. Mr. Dixon?
Present.
Mr. Rollins? Mr. Scavano? Mrs. McCullough? Mr. Segal?
Here.
Mr. Connor? Ms. Stanford?
Here.
With four present or with five present, two absent, no, four. No, we have five. We have five, sorry, excuse me. Five present, two absent, we have a quorum. Excuse me, please.
Awesome. Before we go any further, Rod and Connor, thank you so much. You're working behind the scenes to make this work on Channel 20. Is that correct? Do we have that on Channel 20?
We do.
All right. You have your meeting minutes from June 2nd. Are there any changes, corrections, or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, there's, I'll take a consensus to approve. Thank you. Are there any, so we have new business, two items on there. The first one is digital resource management analytics and compliance. I'm going to guess Jason? Well, I'm going to put, give you the floor then. I'm going to mute.
All right, I think I'm ready here. Good evening, everyone.
Okay, Jason, just let me interject before you begin that we want to remind everyone, all of our board members, to please hold your questions until after you finish this presentation.
Okay, thank you. What I'm bringing forward tonight is the digital resource management analytics and compliance. In short, it's two pieces of software that we'll be using for the instructional side. One of those is ClassLink, which is the digital resource management and the analytics piece. And the other piece is GoGuardian, which is the compliance piece and the URL web filtering. We're just trying to change slides here. One second. Okay, we're ready. So the problem we're trying to address here really is we have 49 different digital resources and tools that are used across the district through many different classrooms. And right now, that's disconnected data from an analysis perspective. We don't have a single sign-on for our students right now. We've got disparate digital resources and non-standardized rostering. So with like, with all of our different applications, we've got one individual that does manual rostering on an annual basis once the schedules are complete for each of those different applications. Additionally, the compliance side of the house for our students, when it comes to remote learning and web filtering and making sure that we're CIPA compliant when they're logged into an RPS 205 account, when they're doing classroom work, we cannot currently do without the tools that I'm presenting tonight. Think of it as, we do have the puzzle pieces for the analytics piece for all of our digital resources, but they're not connected right now. So each individual application that we bring forward is measured separately. And with ClassLink that we'll present here tonight will allow us to connect all that data under one analytic platform. So the background, what we've done, we took advantage with ClassLink and GoGuardian with the extended trials that were available during the COVID-19 back in March. And actually, we've been doing a pilot with GoGuardian since February with 100 teachers. What we've done in the past for the web filtering piece for students is use our district web filter, our firewall to do that. But that's really not targeted for the K-12 arena. It's really an enterprise class firewall. So it really doesn't, we have to do a lot of manual configuration from a web filtering perspective for K-12 to be CIPA compliant. And if I'm a remote student, I'm not web-filtered when I'm logged into a district account. So with the ClassLink, excuse me, with the GoGuardian that we're presenting will allow us to do that. It's a plugin into Chrome, no matter where I'm at or what device I'm on. If I log into my rps205.com account, I get the same access to the internet as if I would be at the district. We had a few alternative choices that we looked at for this, specifically with ClassLink. There's a number of different opportunities out there that we looked at. Clever's a big one, and they do the single sign-on. And what that allows, again, with the ClassLink and Clever, is if I'm a student, I don't have to go to a bunch of different places to log into the applications and the digital resources I have assigned to me. I go into one portal and they're all available for me there. Clever does offer that as well, as well as the rostering piece, which allows us to do that centralized rostering. However, they don't have any access to the file stores that our students use. So if you can see the little, it's kind of hard to see with the window here with the cameras, but on the right, under my files, you can actually get access to the school network. So like my shared drive at the district, my Google Drive, and my OneDrive, all in one location, regardless of where I'm at. And a lot of students save their documents on the school network, so they'll be able to access that from home. GoGuardian's admin portal and the on-the-fly web control for teachers is a lot better than what Securely and Lightspeed offer as well. So that allows a teacher, if they just want to allow a student access to YouTube, just one channel, they can do that on the fly without having to call IT to do that work. So this is our solution. This drawing here just kind of represents what we're doing as a whole. And it really ties and associates with the EdTech and the e-learning plan that academics and curriculum put together. And it's really kind of a two-phase process. Phase one, which I'm not really talking about tonight, but I'll briefly mention, is how we actually choose an application or a digital resource that's used in the schools. And it goes through a process. So you can see all these apps that are available. We go through a privacy and security, and then many departments are involved. IT from a privacy and security, academics to make sure that the application aligns with curriculum, whether it's on the approved Title I menu. And then also, it goes through a cabinet and board approval process as you see, when you see the consolidated contracts come through on an annual basis. So what I'm presenting tonight is really that phase two. How do we know if those applications are actually, that we're getting return on investment for them? And that's where the ClassLink comes into play. It gives us that data-driven decision-making. We can look at, let's say we purchase 1,000 licenses for Seesaw. We can see in the application that we've had, let's say we have 1,000, and we see 50 students, unique IDs over that year that has used that application. And that helps in how long they've used it. That gives us an idea for actually getting value out of our digital resources that we're purchasing. In addition, with the GoGuardian piece, what we get is the digital or the teacher ability to do the classroom management. So if I'm sitting, teaching students virtually or in the classroom, as long as they're logged in and I'm rostered to that class, I can see all my students' screens, and I can help them out. I can shoot the messages, hey, get on task, don't go over to YouTube watching that video. And that gives that availability to those students as well, or to those teachers. The cost for this, ClassLink is a one-year subscription for $87,070. GoGuardian is $149,060 for a total of $236,130. We did calculate in some indirect costs, and that's for the PD and the training that'll be presented during Teacher Institute of roughly $129,000. And that's for teachers as well as the administrative staff. Some of the things we're accomplishing with this, one is centralizing all of our digital resources that we offer our classrooms into one portal. That's our goal, we're going to try to meet. That'll be a couple of years to do so, because currently, some of the applications we have don't, aren't, don't work with ClassLink at the moment. But we will either be working with those vendors to do so, which is something that ClassLink does all the time. They've got over 12,000 applications and digital resources they work with. Or depending on the application, we may look for an alternative that actually works with ClassLink. The big piece is the analysis and measurement piece that will be huge for us. Again, to be able to look at those applications across the board and compare usage across the schools by student, by grade. And we can loosely correlate that to student achievement as well. So if we see one school or one class using a specific app and we see a higher student achievement, whereas another class isn't using it, we don't, obviously, there's other variables that come into play. But we can loosely correlate that data back. Again, safety and compliance is a big piece of that, especially when we're working remotely, not just mentioned just in the schools, and ensuring our students are not getting to websites they should not, and that they're remaining CIPA compliant. And then the classroom management piece, which I mentioned before, which we did use in the past with another company, but this is all wrapped up into one software with GoGuardian. So we're able to retire that application and allow those teachers to be able to see what their students are doing. We actually plan on the implementation of this, the 12th of this month after the board meeting. However, we've done a lot of work already because of the fact that we were able to take advantage of those extended trials with the COVID. A lot of the education companies allowed us to do that. So we're really, really ahead of the ballgame. With the GoGuardian piece, it's just a matter of changing it from the pilot to the subscription model where we're paying. And we're off and running on that. There's a little bit more configuration and integrating the apps in the ClassLink, but our intent is to be ready for the September 1st start date. The return on investment with this, again, I had mentioned that the IS staff spends a lot of time doing manual rostering for all these different applications and creating files to be able to have those students enrolled into those specific applications so they can log in. Because we have a consistent rostering standard, we'll be able to save about 200 hours, FTE hours a year. So we don't have to do that going forward. It actually pulls the data right out of our, out of our student information system. So if a student changes a class one day, the next day, they may not have, they will lose the access to that app and gain the access to the apps that they need. So very seamless integration. The student login and access time is another benefit. For a student to be able to go from class to class to class and log into the different apps, remembering what links they are, will no longer have to do that. Again, they'll be able to log once into their ClassLink portal and then get to whatever apps that are associated with that class. And then the baseline and the measurement of digital resources, that actionable data, that data-driven decision-making that we really haven't had in one centralized place in the past will be a huge benefit for us. So I mentioned the consolidated contracts, and those came through a couple meetings ago. But what you'll be able to see on that report coming forward is, not only are we approving these 16 or 18 applications, this is how much they've been used, we are getting value out of these. And you have that report on there so we can make those educated decisions. And that list may be smaller, because we determine, based on the analytics reporting from ClassLink, that they just aren't beneficial, or we're not getting our value out of it. Or it may be larger, because we decided a different app. We're going to use the first semester and trimester to establish our baseline. Again, this is brand-new to us. But once that's established, we'll be able to do proactive measuring. Principals, teachers, administration will be able to log in to the ClassLink app and very easily see how much, you know, Johnny Doe has been logged into Seesaw right down to the student or this class and do comparisons across. So we'll be able to make on-the-spot corrections or look at those apps and find out why it's not getting used and reach out instead of waiting a year to figure that out. And then the annual reporting, again, as I mentioned, the consolidated contracts and providing those reports as they come forward to the board. At this time, I'll open it up for any questions.
All right. Just have to speak up because I can't see the people at the table. It's too far of a shot. So, and I can't, I don't have a gallery on my screen. Are you ready for any questions?
I got one simple question. As far as the training, I mean, it seemed like a wonderful program. I was just more concerned about the training and make sure that the teachers can implement it. Because it does them no good if they don't have the correct training or proper training. Can you go a little further in that, a little bit more detail as far as the training?
Yeah, I sure can. So we've worked directly with our vendor, and Susan Urum has worked closely with talent development. So we've got several different trainings available during Teacher Institute, and most of those classes are already filled up. And that's specifically with ClassLink and the GoGuardian piece. So that'll be a big component, a lot of the digital resources in general, but for the Teachers Institute Day.
Will there be like continuous training in the sense as they can reach out to the company itself? Or we have experts in that field that?
So we will have, we'll have IT and IS trained as well. Additionally, there's been discussion on recording the Teachers Institute classes, so those are available.
Okay.
But we also have support through the vendor as well if we need additional training.
So we piloted this already, kind of?
We did for the GoGuardian piece. We've been really building on the ClassLink piece. We haven't necessarily piloted that yet, but we've done our homework on this for probably about the last year with the ClassLink and decided it was a perfect time to come forward, especially being the remote circumstance that we're in.
Thanks, Anthony. Do any of the board members have questions?
I do, Jude. Oh, sorry, Mike, go ahead, Michael. All right. Yeah, I had two questions. Mine was also about teacher training and making sure that they're all going to get a really high level of training and be very comfortable with it. Because if they're going to be able to give access to sites just on the fly without having to go down to IT, I think in order for that to be really valuable, they're all going to have to really be fluent with it. So I'm really hoping that we can provide that fluency to all the teachers. And I guess, because I've been asked about technology from teachers in the past in regards to, is this actually tracking me? Is this following me where I go? Is there any element of this that teachers are going to be concerned about in terms of feeling like they're always being looked upon with their technology wherever they are?
So nothing any different than what we have now. You will be able to see when they're logged into the application, but that's no different than being logged into the computer. And just to touch base a little bit more on allowing the web access. So we'll have our base level filtering. So we'll filter out like all the pornographic sites, things like that. What it allows a teacher to do from a web filtering on the fly. So if we allow Khan Academy and a bunch of different things to YouTube, they say, well, I don't want my student going here and here and here. I just want them to go to Khan Academy today. They can say, you can only get to here. So they get that extra level. But again, we're not taking anything away from web filtering that we're doing now. And then the GoGuardian, we've had 100 teachers in the pilot since February on that. So we have boots on the ground that can help with that training as well.
Okay, David, did you, Michael, do you have any question, did you?
Yeah, Ms. David Dunn.
David, are you done?
I am done. Done. Been. The end.
The end. Okay, your turn, Mike.
A couple things. First of all, really good job out in this, a lot of good planning. One kind of question on this is that it's one thing for applications to be more or less integrated, but it sounds, and we've had discussions, that the data is integrated. So going forward, there'll be a lot of comprehensive analysis that ClassLink will be able to do. And as we add applications, obviously, we're going to look for that integration. For those apps that aren't integrated today, is there a plan to essentially export from them into the standard, which would be the ClassLink?
So in short, yes. One of the biggest ones we use now is Reading Horizons. And we are working very closely. We've connected between Reading Horizons and ClassLink. And they build, in technical terms, an API between the two systems to be able to standardize the rostering and the communication between the systems. So again, as I mentioned earlier, ClassLink supports over 12,000 applications. It's the largest vendor to do that. And they're adding more every day, and they're more than happy to work with any vendors we have if we have an application or digital resource that we want to continue to use.
And the integration with Reading Horizons in particular, is that going to be done by the fall?
Yes, yeah, we're already working with them, and we'll be ready to go. The only piece we're missing on some of this right now is actually getting the students rostered as we're working through planning for the fall. Once they're rostered, that'll be fully integrated. So we're just about three weeks out from having all of our applications fully integrated into ClassLink.
In terms of the actual reporting that ClassLink does, could you review at a high level some of the things that are, we're capable of doing? So for example, could we do recording by, I assume by not just the class and the individual, but maybe by school or cohort or some other kind of category?
Yes, so you can do, you can look at application usage by school, by application itself, by class, by grade. And you can go down to the student, and you can do comparisons between a third-grade class here at this school and a third-grade class at this school. Additionally, it also gives us analytics on the licensing structures, as I mentioned earlier. So again, if I purchased, you know, 1,000 licenses of Seesaw, I can see across the district that 800 of those licenses are being accessed by a unique student throughout the year. And that gives us some idea of, maybe we need to cut back by 200 licenses. So that's another component of it.
Would it be a fair assumption that the evaluations that right now we're going on with principals to have really, if you will, more site control over things like budgets? You know, like how the school is achieving? That this ClassLink and the analytical capabilities would be a help to the principals in seeing where they're at and using it as a communication device?
Yeah, that's absolutely a fair assumption. We haven't dug deep into that. Again, that'll be through the professional development side, but they'll have that at their fingertips to be able to look into that application to see if they're purchasing a digital resource that it's actually being used, and they can make budgetary decisions as well on that.
And I don't want to speak for anybody else on the board, but I think it would be very useful, since one of the develops, the district, or developments the district has done is to make it more school and principal-centric, is to have some of this reporting on a regular basis. And presuming that others might be interested, I think that the analysis would be valuable. That would be at least my thought. The second question I got, believe me or not, that was one section. The second is about a comparison. There were some rightful complaints, because it was so last minute, at the end of last year on the use of educational technology. And so it would be a fair question for somebody to say, well, what has changed for the fall that would make it better for us in the experience for the students, for the teachers, and the administration?
Listen, do you mind if I take a stab at that one?
Sure, please do.
Okay, sure. So as you know, we surveyed families and teachers and support staff and students last spring. And what we learned about their experience of remote learning is they were asking, we were pulling them in too many directions. We were asking them to log on to multiple different applications, each with unique usernames and passwords, and it was too much. And so ClassLink provides this streamlined approach along with our effort at streamlining all of our tools altogether. So there's really one main portal for parents to navigate. And so there's no longer unique passwords and usernames for every single application. So we responded to that data, that feedback from the survey in partnership with IT to have a more seamless experience and to have fewer applications for parents to really learn and understand and even communicate with to their school.
And as I understand it, there's been some good communication and training with the teachers. And it sounds like that this environment has been better accepted, from what I understand, and that there's been real progress in terms of the buy-in and the application on a more consistent basis of all the resources, the digital resources.
That's correct.
No comments? You're on mute.
Yep, thank you. We have, I'm going to double-click. We have. More than 2,000 different this summer already. We're not done yet. On things like Seesaw, Google Classroom, NearPod, Squirology. And then we have that, you know, training ready for ClassLink and GoGuardian prior to the start of school as well. And what we're hearing from teachers is that they're appreciating the opportunity while they're not deeply embedded in teaching remotely at the same time as they're trying to learn. To kind of just step back a little bit, learn more about the platform. to kind of just step back a little bit, learn more about the platforms and learn how to create more engaging learning experiences. And similar feedback from participants this summer is that less is more, simple is better. And the simpler and more streamlined we can make this, the more likely we are to be able to have great partnerships with parents in a remote environment.
All right, everything sounds good. And from my point of view, really, the whole team has done a really good job. So thank you. A lot of good planning, a lot of good communication. And I particularly like the fact that there is flexibility in the way this was implemented and that there'll be a whole process and a method behind the choosing of the applications and how it relates to the overall.
So my only question or comment would be my expectation that the information that you mine about the use will help lead or direct your choices in what you purchase when you bring those contracts forward. That's what you've been telling us. So this is the tool that you said you'd be using to do that. And I think that's a great thing. I also think it's a great thing for parents to make the entry easier. So that's a, and I like the fact that there's oversight for the teachers over the students as to what they're doing, since we're going to be holding them accountable for their remote time and seeing where they are and what they're working on. So. All right. If there aren't any other questions on that, we'll move on, but that will come back to us on the August 11th board meeting for a vote. Ms. Yar, you have our second item, which is the resolution to regulate expense reimbursement.
That's correct. So what this resolution is, is in 2019, we changed our travel expense reimbursement policy. And this is just bringing that forward, that resolution. The resolution was originally passed in 2017. And when we updated this admin reg, I did not bring forward the resolution at the same time, so I'm bringing forward it tonight in order to update that. Any questions on that?
Board members, speak up if you have any questions. I'm hearing none. I will say this also is going to return for a vote as August 11th. So if you have any other questions to get to Ms. Yar before then or on the night of the vote. We're on to reports. So Ms. Yar, I'll let you continue to present your report on the property tax abatement update.
Okay, so I need to bring this forward biannually to just update the board on what abatements we have outstanding. So I'm doing that tonight with the Six Flags Magic Waters and the Ust Wing. We also make note of the Ingersoll project that has not started yet, has not been completed. So I will update the board when that happens. But these are the two that we have currently for 2020 tax year payable in 2021. Any questions on that?
Hearing none. Move on to the second item on our report, which is the board member's discussion of the return to school plan. So I think the best place to start with that is, I'll feed the floor to Dr. Jarrett to have a little bit of an update on where we're at with that plan. And then, board members, if you're either with questions or where you're at with that whole situation, we're not holding on, but certainly the leadership provides direction if there's anything that seems to be a red flag or need for explanation. Dr. Jarrett?
Thank you, Mrs. McCullough. We are just wrapped up our surveys last evening and had a very strong response from the community. We are also doing some extended outreach at the school level for families that may have missed us. We want to try to pull everybody in as much as possible and are in the process of utilizing that feedback to take a hard look at the way our plans are laid out. We are seeing a very balanced message from the community on a preliminary basis at least. We are very, we are very, we're seeing very equal responses for a desire for in-person as well as remote learning. So we are happy that we offered that choice to families because it appears there is strong support for both options. There are a few ideas that are coming increasingly, are becoming increasingly clear as we receive that feedback. One such idea is, as we have looked at our remote learning options for early childhood that have been limited to medical, we are strongly considering looking into an option that would allow remote learning for early childhood. There are very good developmental reasons for why we were reluctant to do that, but we also are seeing very strong community feedback that there is a desire to at least have that as an option. So that is something we're contemplating. We are also working hard to develop what our remote learning as well as our in-person learning models will look like at all levels in terms of specific implementation. And we're going to be having, I believe, a great deal of internal conversation about that. One thing in particular that we're really strongly looking into is the concept of a hybrid concept on our, where we really focus on the opportunity to provide opportunities on Wednesday at the secondary as well as the elementary level to meet the needs of our students for response intervention and other opportunities. So there's going to be increasing conversation about what that Wednesday can look like, and we're looking to develop that. We also are continuing to work with principals and teachers to talk about what our development work looks like. No matter what happens, these are going to be, we're going to need to be very flexible and highly prepared at the principal, assistant principal, teacher, and staff level. So we have a great deal of staff training that has already occurred in the summer and in the spring and will continue to occur. As a result, we are, we have announced that we are looking at a fourth institute day to start the school year. We had already planned on three. And so we are looking at adding an additional day of training and a little bit more of a gradual first week of school for families. And we'll continue to provide details in that area as well. But we really want to make sure faculty, staff, and students and families have the maximum acclimation opportunity in that first week at all levels. So there, we'll certainly be talking about that as well. So I did, I did want to highlight those specific concepts. And before I complete my remarks, did want to turn it over to either Mr. Zetiker or Mrs. Detman to talk a little bit about training or development. And also, Mr. Barthel, if you would, if you would not mind sharing a few high-level ideas about how we are developing technology to get things ready. And then I'd love to hear, spend most of our time hearing from the board. Mr. Zetiker, if you wanted to share something on, anything additional on Institute Day or Training?
Yeah, so I would say we've done some really good work this summer. Mrs. Detman alluded to that in her comments previously in terms of the number of staff members who have attended the different offerings this summer that had to do with the philosophy around remote teaching, but as well as all of the platforms that teachers will be asked to utilize and to use for both communication with families, but also the remote instruction that they'll use with, with students. We also did make some adjustments to our Teacher Institute. We had some really great created sessions. And if the board remembers, the last couple of years, we've gone to kind of a workshop model where teachers register for courses that have been created and really facilitated mostly by RPS staff. Due to the, the ever-changing landscape and the plans for in-person, hybrid, or remote instruction, we've worked with a cross-functional team to allow Teacher Institute to be more on the preparedness of using our different platforms, not only from an individual teacher standpoint, but also then taking it to the next kind of level where they're working with their grade level teams, PLCs, in working in those platforms for the creation of engaging lessons and how to continue to engage our students and our families remotely. And we thought it was really important to make sure that we're giving time dedicated to staff there. We also are allowing building some more time during that Teacher Institute Day to really get accustomed and acclimated to how the physical functions of that building is going to run, elementary through high school, whether that's the flow of hallways, what the lunchroom looks like, the entry, the dismissal time, all of those safety precautions that we're putting on paper. We want to make sure that staff feel very comfortable being able to execute those plans day in, day out for the safety of both our students and our staff. So we have made some adjustments there. And we will also be presenting the academic calendar to board members the next board meeting, where the state has allowed us to implement some remote learning planning days that both count as student attendance days, but also an opportunity for principals and groups of teachers and PLCs to be able to reflect on the progress and how remote teaching's going, how hybrid teaching is going, and do we need to be able to make any kind of pivots and improvements on how our model is being delivered and how the engagement of students is. So Mrs. Detman, I don't know if you have anything to add to that?
I guess I would just add that, you know, we're making this big shift in our Teacher Institute Days because we are preparing ourselves for a year like no other. And we believe that in order to best prepare for this year, we needed to really adjust our plans to focus on, as Mr. Zetiker said, those health and safety protocols, preparing a classroom in a different way, re-acclimating staff with each other who haven't seen each other now in several months in some cases, and ensuring that there's enough time built in for teachers to get that level of comfort with some of the digital tools if they haven't used them yet this summer. So we believe that with our new plan here for the start of school, we have enough time built in for all of those different processes and explorations to take place. And other than that, I wouldn't, I wouldn't add anything else. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Barthel?
Sure, so we've spent a lot of time in the Technology Department, really looking at the device distribution across the district in order to make a one-to-one per student. And with the CARESAC dollars, we purchased 14,000 brand-new Chromebooks as well as 4,450 iPads, including cases, work-in cases as well, so they can easily be taken home. A focus on six-through-12, being able to take those home on a daily basis. And other devices for those early childhood, really through second grade with the iPads, that those things are pre-assigned to those students. So in the event we do have a school closure, those devices can easily go home with that student to continue remote learning. Another piece that we've really focused on is that connectivity piece for the students working remotely, for those who may not have internet access. And you've seen a lot of that come through, both working with Comcast Internet Essentials as well as T-Mobile and the Power Ed for the Wi-Fi hotspots in the homes. So that'll allow that student to have all the resources they need regardless of where they're at to continue to learn. And then as we presented tonight with the, with the ClassLink and the GoGuardian, really that one-stop shop for a student to be able to log into and get to their applications and digital resources, and then also that compliance piece to make sure they're not going anywhere they shouldn't on those devices.
And just finally, before we dive into our discussion, I want to ground us back into the critical framework that, and kind of theory of action that I've attempted to lay out to our community. And it isn't, it isn't that everyone sees it this way, but we have attempted as a leadership team to work with the board to have a plan that balances three interlocking circles. We think it matters that we provide an equitable, high-quality learning environment. We think it matters that we provide social, emotional support for our students. And of course, we think it matters that we keep our faculty, staff, students, and families safe. And our plan is ultimately a plan that we believe does the best job possible of meeting all three of those interests. When we talk about safety, we've received a lot of feedback from, from faculty, staff, and community members expressing concerns about safety. We have had daily meetings for nearly two and a half months now focusing on every, on those three circles and making sure we have the best possible academic plan, the best possible social, emotional support for students and families, and ultimately the best possible safety plan. We continue on a safety, on the safety front, we are very much guided by Dr. Martell and the local Winnebago County Health Department as well as the state of Illinois. We are closely monitoring the community infection rates. And we ultimately are in stage four of five, which allows us to consider hybrid models or in-person models. But we are certainly monitoring that closely in conjunction with health experts. And if anything changes in that direction, we're very open to that. We also know that there are pros and cons to all different learning models. And the ones we're proposing, from our perspective, attempt to both provide choice to our community, which we think was extremely important, and also to maximize our effectiveness within that critical framework of the three circles. There's certainly an opportunity to have a difference of opinion about what the weighting should be in those areas. And it's my hope, as we have our conversation tonight and moving forward, that we continue to do the best we can to drive positive outcomes in all three of those areas to the best of our ability. There certainly are no perfect plans or perfect answers, but we are committed to working with our community to do the best possible job we can to meet those three needs for our students and their families. So with that, would love to turn it over, Mrs. McCullough, back to you and the board for board comment and questions moving forward.
Thank you, Dr. Jarrett. Who'd like to start?
I will.
Hi, June.
Hi, June.
Yay, go, June, go.
I guess really my, my gut feeling is that education is essential. It's one of our essential businesses. And with that in mind, it is essential that we get our kids back to school. Other essential businesses have been working all along during the shutdown and have seemed to be able to do it successfully. I think that we can do that, too. Our administration has put a lot of time and effort and thought into the planning that's going into reopening schools. And I think they've done a great job. I think it's that we can do it, and I hope that we have success.
Should we go around the table? David, you want to go? Anthony, Mike, who's the, David?
I'm going to keep my mask on for the few people that might be watching, so they don't see me. I think I'm probably in a really significant minority in my thoughts on how this should work out. And I've been pretty consistent from the get-go that my preference would be for remote learning and remote teaching. Having received the results of the parent survey, I guess I, I have taken a little bit of a different view on it. I still am kind of digging the idea of remote. But I guess I'm feeling like it might be ideal to limit that to secondary for a variety of reasons, both for the students and for the teachers. In the case of the students, with the current plan, each student is going to have two days of face-to-face instruction per week. The other three days will be the opportunity for them to complete whatever work was assigned to them, have access to their teachers, to get deeper understanding, get questions answered, and get a really deep level of understanding of the instruction that is delivered to them in those two days. It also gives them access to labs to a certain degree, although I think it's going to be challenging to provide the sort of lab experience to our secondary students in a limited amount of time. So I guess I'm seeing the two-day instruction face-to-face as not necessarily having any more rigor than going to all remote, where we could then have the option of presenting to all of our secondary students five days a week of instruction. But as it is right now, even the remote instruction is only going to be two days a week. But as it is right now, even the remote instruction is only going to be two days a week. And I think those students are going to be really challenged, and at the secondary level, it's a little bit different between middle school and high school, but still, about half the families chose remote. And I don't know how many families understood that if they chose remote, they were still only going to get two days of actual instruction. The way it was laid out to me, it didn't feel 100% clear, but that could also just have been me. I think that's likely. So unless somebody can tell me otherwise, and I think it's very likely that somebody can, that with the two-day face-to-face instruction, there's going to be a reasonable dilution of the instruction that's given. Likewise, in remote learning, there will be a dilution, just simply because of limited But when half our families chose remote, I feel like we then are presented with the opportunity to offer them more rigor than just two days a week of instruction. On the teacher's side, it then feels like if we're going to have the secondary teachers doing five days of instruction, that very closely matches the elementary doing five days of instruction. It seems very balanced from that perspective. It seems fair, equitable. And when we're talking about equity, I think we need to think about it more from just a student perspective, but also from a teacher perspective. I realize half of our elementary students chose remote, and that can present some serious challenges for spreading up students amongst teachers, because it's not going to be the same at every single school. You can't just say, you know, we have a kindergarten class of 24 students, 12 chose face-to-face, 12 chose remote. We actually have some instances where we have kindergartens where five chose face-to-face, with 100% of the class reporting. And so the bulk of those kids chose remote. Yet we're still going to have to have a teacher available to instruct those kids five days I'm not exactly sure how to work that out. I'm just noticing that that could be a significant challenge. But here's the thing about the five days a week face-to-face instruction for elementary and why it makes sense. When the community voluntarily dropped the exposure to the teachers by 50%, they dropped the dose of COVID by 50% as well. We get to create a ton of space in between students, and for those who really need that face-to-face instruction and have chosen it, I think we now have an environment that is safe for that face-to-face instruction, especially at these grade levels where it's most crucial, that we provide these kids with a really great foundation. I don't know how to work out allowing the 50% of elementary who chose face-to-face to have it, and the 50% who chose remote to have it. But somehow, that's what we've offered, and that's what the community has accepted or But really, my gut's telling me, at the secondary level, the five days of instruction, because all of the students are remote, and I can't think of a good reason not to offer that, is a better choice than the two days of instruction for only half of our kids face-to-face, being so much greater than the two days of instruction we can offer to those families that chose remote. That's where it seems like there's an inequity that really comes up. So I guess I would like to ask if there is somebody who could convince me that the two days of face-to-face instruction can be just as effective as the five days? And will it somehow be even remotely fair for those who chose remote learning? And then I'll take that answer, then I have a couple other comments, so.
I would like, if I could, Mrs. McCulloch, turn that over to Mrs. Detman to just do a little more explanation of what the secondary learning model may look like. I think there has been probably a need for increased communication, so I really appreciate Mr. Siegel raising that issue on the floor tonight, and Mrs. Detman would take the time to walk through how, even with a two-day of kind of that A-B schedule concept for secondary students, how a full week's worth of rigor could effectively be delivered in that model. I think that's a very, I think, a common question in our community and certainly among our board. Mrs. Detman?
Sure. I'm happy to take the question, actually, because this time and this system disruption really forces us to think about everything differently. And so, on its face, you might think, oh, my gosh, there's only two days that my child is going to be quote-unquote "taught," and that only in that synchronous space where the teacher and the students are together in person is where learning will occur. One important lesson coming out of remote learning from the spring is that through technology and through collaborative technology especially, screen casting and synchronous instruction and asynchronous, so out-of-time with teachers and students, instruction can still occur in lots of different ways. Some of that happens through pre-recording, some of that happens through recorded modeling, some of that will happen through collaborative documents and collaborative presentations. But learning is still going to occur all five days of the week. It's during that time that a teacher and a student are interacting in real time, where I would say the highest dosage of that kind of modeling and back-and-forth and Q&amp;A can happen with more intensity. But it's expected that it's going to be happening throughout the instructional week. And as a teacher, I'm thinking differently about the way that I lesson plan. You know, in kind of pre-COVID days, I was really thinking about things in those 50-minute class period lesson plans. Now I'm going to be expanding that a little bit in the way that I plan, and I'm going to be thinking about the entire week. I'm going to be thinking about all the time that's available for teachers and students during that entire week, both for synchronous or in-time instruction, whether that's virtual or in-person, asynchronous opportunities to learn, whether that's through screen casting or other modeling. And then I'm also going to think about how I'm going to be providing direct student feedback right onto their work, through things like GoGuardian, through Google Classroom, through other kind of digital ways that students are going to be submitting their learning. And I'm also going to be thinking about other tools that we've adopted, like Flipgrid, where students are working and learning with each other. So I can see that perspective, that it feels like it's going to be diluted, and our challenge is going to be learning how to really maximize that time of more intensity together, so that it can be leveraged throughout the week as students are learning in different ways and interacting in different ways. We have about 50 REA members who are working with several members of my team on the Ed Services Division to create those models and those frameworks and those samples, so that we're not all, you know, kind of guessing at the start of the year, and we have a good, strong start with what instruction needs to look like, both in-person and in a remote environment. Because, to be honest, we're going to have to be able to flexibly and fluidly move between those two different models of instruction, dependent on, you know, our local health data and the data in the state. So we need to be ready at any point in time to maximize both in-time learning synchronous and then out-of-time learning asynchronous and collaboration, and how digital tools can help us get there. But the goal is absolutely not dilution. The goal is to really get clear on what's important and to kind of clear the clutter of anything that's taking up learning time, that isn't really focused on those high-quality interactions between teacher and students and students together.
I get that. It sounds a bit like a college experience, where there's class a couple of days a week, tends to be lecture-intensive, you get office hours. I'm trying to think, then, that those families that chose all remote at secondary in particular, their priority was just safety, and the compromise they made was this new and innovative rigor made available by a two-day face-to-face week that they would not have been aware of, simply because they thought, wow, two days a week, not the same as five days a week, I guess I'm going to choose safety. What's the level of rigor that's going to be offered to those families? And is it going to be comparable to the face-to-face?
Ms. Detman, would you correct? Is it's two days remote or two days face-to-face? Is that correct? And the rest is independent learning?
If you have chosen the in-person model, you have two days of in-person instruction and three days of remote learning.
But the remote learning, will they be face-to-face with the teacher, with attendance, with curriculum, with teachers giving them assignments, or will it just be they have assignments they're working on on their own?
Oh, I understand. So the question really is, was remote learning actually independent learning? And the answer is no. Remote learners are rostered to teachers. There will be synchronous and asynchronous time, so they're going to be learning in real time with their teacher, and they'll also have independent work. The difference is not being in-person, it's being remote.
How many days a week will remote secondary students be synchronous or asynchronous, either one, with the teacher directly?
Aaron, do you want to...would you like to weigh?
Is the question...okay, Ms. Detman, if I am a remote student, I will have class with a teacher scheduled two days a week, four days a week, which?
It's going to be two days a week with the current model that we have proposed, and it's going to depend on what structures the teacher puts in place, but my understanding is the current model that we have discussed in the community is two days a week for the in-person experience with three days remote, and five days a week remote is what has been proposed.
But I...
Could I ask a clarifying question, June?
Yeah, the definition, it's really, the floor is yours, David, but what is remote? I think that's where we're stumbling.
That's exactly right. So I'm thinking there's remote learning, you know, for those families that chose five days a week, that the kids are going to have five hours a day, or whatever, to be at their computers with actual engaged instruction time with a teacher. Does that happen five days a week or two days a week for those who chose remote?
So in the current plan that we have shared with the community, the remote plan would be checking in daily with their teacher, and please correct me if I'm wrong, Mrs. Detman, to explain the details of how that would work in theory. And then the families that have chosen in-person would be able to check in with their teacher as needed for an intervention day on Wednesday, and either Monday or Thursday or Tuesday and Friday for in-person instruction, with other remote check-ins possible, but would vary. That is my understanding. But Mrs. Detman, am I missing anything in terms of how I'm describing the plan as it currently exists?
No, the plan as it currently exists is how you described it. You know, and our challenge right now is to really take a look at that survey data, which has been really powerful, and make sure that we're prepared for the volume of remote learners, and that's our work right now. We have, you know, throughout the summer, been working on these instructional frameworks to really balance that instructional time and in alignment with the guidelines from ISBE. And now that we know the volume that we're dealing with, that gives us kind of our last little nudge into our final planning stages.
David, the floor is still yours.
I guess I'm still stuck on that, and I'm going to, I guess, just have to be satisfied with being stuck. But I guess I'm going to ask it one last time. For those families that chose remote learning, they are getting two days of instruction in the most rigorous and new and creative educational delivery that we can provide, and then it's going to be three days where the students are going to be checking in, but not have a schedule of class from this time to this time, take a break this time to this time, like a normal school day. And I guess I'm feeling, and I could be wrong, but if secondary were all remote, you would have the opportunity to create that schedule, and it could be uniform across our high schools. That's one of the beauties of having academies, where a lot of that instruction should look very much the same at one school as it does the other, unless you're in a special program.
So the disadvantage, the advantage to remote under our current option is that you do have five days a week. The disadvantage would be the inability to physically come into the building for in-person experiences like labs, like college and career and technical education experiences. So that's one. Two, one of our concerns about only offering a virtual option is, despite our best efforts to improve participation virtually, we know that we had very significant gaps in student participation, and we still will run the risk that a high percentage of students will not check in on a daily basis. So that is part of why we wanted to offer the virtual option. But absolutely right that there are advantages to the virtual option being five days a week in the sense that there could be a daily scheduled synchronous check-in, no question. So there are going to be trade-offs with any plan, and I think you've done a good job of raising what those trade-offs are. We absolutely believe our remote learning will be better than it was last spring, but we had many situations where we're talking 40% to 45% of students who were disengaged. And so we did feel it was important to give families the choice for that in-person option for those families that were highly engaged and had a difficult time, even because at the end of the day, you know, making that connection is a two-way decision, and some families wanted that extra support of the face-to-face. And so I think that's ultimately the reason we've landed in this choice option, where we offer a blended option as well as a five-day remote. As Mrs. Detman raised the issue, with the potential volume selecting the all-remote, we are going to continue to have to look at our ability to deliver on that, and we're certainly rapidly reviewing the data to determine what the best course of action is moving forward, to see if we can continue to effectively maintain that choice.
Thank you. I have just one last question, and it's an easy one. Thank you. I have just one last question and it's an easy one. When, and because we're going to have a whole bunch of teachers that will need for remote instruction. When will those jobs start going up and becoming available? And what is the priority for selecting teachers for those remote positions? Which by the way, will also be in the buildings. Is that correct? Those who do remote teaching will be in the building?
Yeah, so I'll answer both, both parts of those questions. We will be able to most likely advertise our elementary remote positions first. Because of the less nuance with certification around science math. So we'll be able to post those this week, which will be open to apply for. And then we will be looking at several criteria when selecting remote teachers. Certification qualifications. We'll also be looking at potential accommodation requests. So we'll have several factors that we consider when selecting our remote teachers. There, we do have plans in the work where they will report to a physical building. So we're ensuring that we can have that building set up for proper safety protocols. To ensure that if anybody does have a medical accommodation, that we are able to accommodate that. For them to be able to continue to perform the essential, essential functions of that job. Secondary will lag just slightly behind that as we finalize some of our adjusting plans. Now that we're getting some of that survey data back in. As was alluded that we're getting actually more requests for remote than we anticipated. And so that is adjusting our plans a little bit. So we are currently working to make those adjustments.
I'm done Jude.
Okay. Anthony, would you like to comment?
Yes. I've had the discomfort or unfortunate. To have to speak to families that have either lost. Loved ones that have been. Hit by this pandemic. To try to come up with words to comfort them. Some type of, really can't give an explanation for this, but. To try to be there for them. Sometimes that means going to the funeral. Sometimes it just. Means giving a phone call and having conversations with them. As we look at this. I look at this as several different ways. I've, I've been very vocal about going. On virtual, five days. All levels. But I understand the dynamics of what's, what's at stake. So as I was, as we look over, we look, as we look over. The country. African-Americans have been. Despairingly. Attacked worse has affected us. Some of this for health reasons, underlying health reasons. Some of it is for insurance. Some of it is a numerous reasons. But. What really concerns me is that we have a poverty, poverty level over 50% in this area. And so we're asking students to come back. Yes, I, I, I see the work that administrations has done. I am applaud, I applaud you for that. Because you have worked tirelessly. You have answered questions and you have been the forefront. People have said things, negative things about you. So I applaud you for that. But I have concerns just like the other people. And you've answered it pretty much very, to the best of your ability. But. So some of my questions would be this. And you is, if there is a breakout, what are our steps? How are we going to deal with it? And my other concern is cleaning. If you do have. 50% half-days or every other day, A or B shifts. Because we know right now they're not, it's not getting cleaned. We have concerns about it, I should say. And they have proven time and time again. Now with the pandemic here. And these things that. You're, you're going to have to answer. And I'm still in the same vein as. Mr. Segal. I would like for it to be five days. Rachel. But at the same time, we do have choices. And we'd like to give parents the choice, the option to pick their choice. So if they choose to allow their kids to go. That's the parent's choice. But I would like to see. Some way somehow we can do. Suggesting what Mr. Segal said. At least have a conversation about it. That's where I stand.
Thank you, Anthony. Mike?
Yep, I've written down some notes, so I apologize if I'm looking down because. I have to read my own chicken scratching here. The first thing that I'll say is, others have alluded to this is to thank the district. I think. One of the things I'm going to say is. I, I'm reminded every time I talk of this, if you were an old Far Side fan. There's an old cartoon. Shows this demon in hell with this poor guy in front of him. And there's two doors and one says damned if you do and the other door says damned if you don't. And the demon is there poking him saying, go make a choice. So, you know, from my point of view, I think that's kind of where we're at. Is that no matter what choice we make, it's going to be unpopular. And we have to go with the facts and go with what the community wants. And reflect that. And so the first point I'd make is that in that regard. I mean, we certainly, the people that have to be there. You know, teachers in particular, but it would also be, I mean, I don't know the relationship of groups like the paras, the bus drivers. You know, nurses, administrators, there's all kinds of people to take into account. So I think the one thing is that, you know, we need to understand the impact and have planning. And it sounds like we're working well on that. But that was to me important. So that was one of the reasons why I kind of liked the hybrid approach. Is that I think there will be options for people. And in particular for the parents and the family to give them options. Because even though I've heard a great deal from people who want it all virtual. I've also heard from a lot of people who are very insistent that they want in-person. So I think as uncomfortable as it is, to reflect choice is something that is critical for us to do. So that's the first thing that. We have really understood and worked to provide choice. And, and the one thing I want to say out loud. Is that I don't think anybody wants to endanger anybody else. That everybody is concerned about safety across the board. But there are people who really do want that in-person experience. Now, having said that, the one question I have is. What was the assumption that those families that chose in-person? What was their assumption of what in-person meant? So for example, were they thinking that it was four or five days a week on site?
It's different for elementary and secondary, right Erin?
Right, yes, yes. The, the elementary assumption is currently based on a five-day-a-week model. And we're taking a hard look at, at, at how we can. Continue to meet the needs of in-person learners in, in, in a format like that. But we're also looking at some other opportunities as well on Wednesdays in particular. And then the other group, the secondary group was expecting a, to be in either an A group or a B group. And go on Monday and Thursday or Tuesday and Friday. Those were the expectations in terms of in-person learning.
That's what, that's what I understood. I just, I wanted to make it clear that, that when people said in-person. They recognized the difference between elementary and secondary. And they were good with that's what they were signing up for. So it does give confidence. That because we've made that clear, the very fact that we have a 50-50 split. Means that there is a lot of people, and I will say this. That are essentially taking the chance of having their student on-site.
Mike, you're muted.
Yeah, sorry. So I guess my point would be that people understand. And I totally understand the concerns and the impact on various communities. But I think the thing that I'm going to say is. There are a lot of people who have thought this through and it is their choice on what they would like. And we don't have to like their choice, but that's what they have chosen to do. So, you know, I think one of the things that we're going to have to do is really make it clear. As to, you know, things like the cleaning and what those details will be. Because I think it's important to make people comfortable that. Of what exactly they're walking into. So that would be the kind of my, my first basic point. And, and what I'll say is that secondarily. And I totally understand that there's been high impact, especially in the minority community for the virus. But I also want to say that we have a lot of at-risk kids. Across the board. We have a between 55 and 60% poverty level. And we as a board have really made it part of our drumbeat for two years about achievement. And one of my concerns is that. You know, and I, kudos to the administration for really trying to address this. But we have to recognize we have a lot of at-risk kids. And one of the things I've read, and I'm not an expert, but all the articles I read developmentally. Say that in-person for kids makes a lot of difference, especially if they're younger. And so. You know, one of my issues with being remote only. Is, you know, that group of kids that are between the 55 and 60% poverty rate. That already are having achievement issues. So I really think that, you know, we're going to have some tough choices here. Families are going to have tough choices. And so, you know, whatever we choose, we're going to need a lot of engagement across. Everybody on this one. And, and I'm going to make a comment now, which is. I'm really happy to hear that we've got 50 teachers involved in the planning on this. Because one of the things I'm going to say is we need the staff people, all of them. To be involved with what will they do on the remote? What are the practical implementations that they will do? So it's, it's perfectly understandable that there's all kinds of safety concerns. But this, my sense is that there's going to have to be a lot of extra effort. For number one, people to understand all the digital techniques and everything else they're going to have to do. And what specifically they're going to have to do instructionally. To, from my point of view, almost like bridge that gap where kids aren't in the classroom. So this is going to put a, a lot of, for the remote. I mean, it's really going to put a great deal of, of pressure on the achievement side. So I think the achievement is going to be something that. We're going to have to really, I mean, we've said this for now a couple of years. We're going to have to keep their eye on that. The other part. About not having kids in school is that there are basic food. Social, emotional, even safety issues that we've run into in the past. And that the schools in a lot of ways, no other way to say it, are a refuge for a lot of kids. And so one of the things that I would say, and again, the, the district has done a great job. They, the methods of distribution of food and all that has been great. That I think one of the things that I'll say is as an ongoing effort. So we had special efforts at the end of last school year. That now if we have a lot of kids who are not in the buildings. And it sounds like we've got, you know, 50%. We're going to have to do extra work to really make sure that all the things that this school provides. In particular that these, you know, at-risk kids in particular need. And so one of the things that it sounds like we've started to do, we might not, we might even have to do more. Is do more outreach with our local partners, whether it's, and I know I'll miss people, but like United Way. You know. The, those needs for our students, from my point of view, are truly important. And then, can you hear me? I'm having some.
We can hear you Mike.
Okay, sorry, I had a network error. You know, the last thing I'll say is that the viable options. I think that, that we have are really going to be one of the outcomes. And making sure that we keep on track for the achievement. Is, is really going to. Be one of the keys. And so I think early on in this process. We're going to have a sense or need to have a sense of the kinds of things that are and are not being done. At the various schools. So for example, the reporting that we're going to have through the class link and all that is going to be really critical. You know, to know how much the students are getting to their materials, how much time they're spending, teacher feedback and so forth. That is going to be very important for us to track. You know, right out of the gates. And to get everybody lined up. So one of the things I'll say is we are in a difficult position. I don't think it's going to get easier for any of us. There are no easy answers. And clearly just by the comments we've had tonight. It seems like all of us to some level are struggling with how all this is going to be done. So, you know, a lot of tough decisions and a lot of work in the near future.
Thank you, Mike. A comment was made by someone and it could have been in one of the letters that we received. About the fact that there has been no delta in our custodial services that. Mr. Zetaker or. Ms. Holby, whoever's in charge of the custodial and our air mark and everything have, have they, will they be increasing? The number of people working in the buildings so that there is a, an increase? I, I just want to know if people are under the wrong assumption that it's going to be the same as, same as.
We do have Mr. Phillips who's available via Zoom this evening. So I think Mr. Phillips would be the person to, to weigh in. But before he weighs in, I do know there are two important developments. There have been significant and continual conversations about cleaning protocols, equipment. And materials that Mr. Phillips can go into detail. That will, I believe, be very helpful in this process. And two, Mr. Phillips and the team are closely working with Airmark to develop very precise customer feedback metrics. To support improvement. But we certainly understand that this is an area that concern, concerns our, our families and our, and our staff as well. So Mr. Phillips, I'll. So Mr. Phillips, I'll certainly turn it over to you.
Good evening, this is Mike Phillips. Ms. McCullough, yes, we we have been, as Dr. Jarrett said, been closely working with Airmark. As our school plans have been coming in and as we're looking at how principals are approaching lunch and the number of lunch areas that they'll be utilizing, as well as entrances and things of that nature, that does would potentially have an impact on FTEs at a school site. We're looking at that, we are working with Airmark. I expect that we will be bringing something to the board at the end of August with some additional FTEs at some of our larger sites. As Dr. Jarrett alluded to, we are also looking at some equipment that can assist in disinfecting spaces in a shorter timeframe. What I'm talking about there is electrostatic sprayers. It's it's a backpack sprayer that we could disinfect student desks, teachers' desks, tabletops, casework with counters, those type of things, as well as door handles. So we are in the process. I just received quotes today, and we intend to put in a PREC for a purchase order for additional sprayers. So at this point, we've heard definitely our staff and faculty loud and clear about their concerns, as well as our families as they've asked questions through Let's Talk. So we have developed a very thorough clean procedure that's laid out in our staff handbook, as well as our family handbook. As Dr. Jarrett alluded to, we are also working with our with Airmark on a checklist that will be attached outside of a classroom. So we see that a daily cleaning and disinfection happened. Also working on how we report our efforts to the board on a bi-weekly basis. So as I said, we've heard this loud and clear. It's very important for our facilities department that we're creating safe and engaging learning environment. So we are working very diligently to address these concerns.
Are the lights cost prohibitive?
I'm sorry, Mrs. McCullough, can I add one other thing to Mr. Phillips's response? There's one final thing that I think will be helpful is with the robust response that we've received for requests for remote learning, that will also impact just the usage of a building. If you look at many of our buildings may be closer to 50% student capacity as opposed to the 95 to 98%. So while that does not excuse any lax cleaning performance, it does make the task of cleaning the building, I think substantially, I think it gives a leg up in terms of the cleaning process. The fact that we do, we will have substantial students opting into remote learning in all of our schools. So I do think that is another positive thing in addition to, of course, all of the numerous steps that Mr. Phillips laid out for safety protocols, as well as cleaning protocols.
Mr. Phillips, are the lights for the, is it a black light? What is which what wavelength is it that that kills off the virus? Is that was that cost prohibitive to have those in schools?
UV lights and and yes, it it they just don't clean the square footage in a timely manner. That may be something we'd look at in in special cases in rooms where we've had potential outbreaks. But I we can, we can just cover more square footage with these electrostatic sprayers in a in a shorter amount of time.
I only ask the question because of the chemicals that are involved.
All right. I would say that all all disinfectants and cleaners that we're using are all EPA approved. The disinfectant we're using during lunch hours and at our EC centers where they eat in the classrooms are food approved. So we've paid close attention to that as we've selected the disinfectants we've used.
Okay. So as we look at some alternatives for our elementary to, this is not on a cleaning one, thank you, Mr. Phillips, to meet the needs of some of the students who may need extra support, for example, on a Wednesday, even without that, will all of our elementary students receive devices? Even the ones who are attending in person? Will we be 100%?
We all elementary students will have a device that's uniquely assigned to them. However, if they're in the in-person model, that's going to stay in the classroom with them until we, if at some point we move into a remote learning environment for all, that device would go home with them. But we're not looking at a take-home program, 4K through 5, but every child is assigned a device for use during the school day.
But all the remote, the students who sign up for remote will receive a device to use at home? And does that include the early childhood students?
Early childhood students, we're going to be able to provide devices for any family that's in need, that doesn't have a an older sibling in the district. And so we'll be able to provide devices primarily for that communication and demonstration of learning through CSAW in early childhood.
Can I ask what the percentage of our return was of our devices in the spring?
Mr. Barthol?
Of the roughly 13,500 devices that left, we had roughly 2,000 that did not get returned during the spring. We do have adequate number of devices based on the purchases we made with the CARESAC dollars in March to cover one-to-one for all students, though.
Wow, 2,000 out of 13,5. And are any of those students students who will be coming? I'm assuming we will look and see if they've kept their device. We're not going to give them another one. Would that be correct?
So with returning students, we will ask for those device, we will, we will touch base with those to get those devices back if possible. I might turn over to Mrs. Yar to explain kind of the process that we're doing with those devices. But ideally, if we can get those devices back, that would be great. But we don't want to deny them not having a device for learning purposes either.
So we're using the Destiny Resource Manager, so we're tracking all this. So they have the scanning capabilities. It updates at night, so these fees are then associated to a student's account. So we have them feed right now. If those devices did not come back, there is a fee on their account, so we know that. So we will, you know, continue to collect on that fee if they do not have the device. But of the 2,000, I mean, I would expect those to be returning students, and we will be able to identify those because each one is in Destiny for that manner. I mean, that's the reason that we have that software to begin with, is to track inventory of items. So it was perfect that we already had that set up when we deployed Chromebooks in the spring.
Boy, that's a lot of devices. One of the things, and I'm not remembering what makes it into the handbook and what doesn't. So this is for clarification, is that we are adjusting start time for school for the in-person learning at elementary. Well, we're actually adjusting it at high school, but that's the end time, I believe. And the reason that we did that, would somebody just read, edify that for the record?
Yes, the reason we adjusted the elementary start time was to ensure that teachers were arriving when students were arriving so that we would have the ability to make sure that with the need to wear masks, et cetera, and ensure a smooth transition from the bus to class safely, we wanted to make sure that teachers were available to assist with that process. So that was, as well as have everybody ready to start the the school day on time. So that was our, that was our our hope there. And we are largely going to be able to absorb those adjusted times at the secondary level by because we will have significantly less students in the building, we believe we will be able to adjust passing time rather than pushing later into the evening. We certainly were willing to look at pushing later into the evening, but in talking to principals, they really laid a strong concern, particularly middle school principals, of going past 4 o'clock as an end time, particularly as we get into winter months and having students walking home in the dark and things like that. We thought it was a better move to condense the passing time, particularly with students not being able to go to their lockers. We thought that that was viable.
So the students at the elementary schools who are learning remotely will have this, will be in remote school during the same time as the students who are there learning. Is that correct? It's the same five hours because our teachers will all be there at the same time?
As the secondary plan currently exists.
Aaron can't hear you. I don't know what happened.
I'm trying to do the social, no, yeah, I'm trying to to juggle here. As the plan currently exists, as the as the plan currently exists, there are, there will be students that are. I lost track, okay, I lost track because I was getting distracted. The question was what again?
So the question is that our students and who are learning remotely will attend school during the same hours as the students who are in learning in-house because our teachers who are teaching them will also arrive and be in the building at the same time. So everybody's learning at the same time. There's been some misconception across parents that they can, I'm still correcting when I talk to parents, that they can just do their learning whenever they want. But the remote learning for elementary especially is during that. Well, and for secondary who sign up for the remote.
As the plan exists, yes, the the remote learning would occur during similar learning times. Mrs. Detman, anything you would add on that?
No, that's correct. Our our teacher working hours are the same. And so the instructional day, the intention here is that the instructional day is the same, whether you're in person or you're remote. Just that that balance of time and how much is on the screen and independent learning is what would vary.
And all teachers, I know you mentioned this, Mr. Segal, but all teachers will, all staff will be in the buildings, even if they're teaching remote and in a safe environment if they need medical. You need, you know, so that they're not interfacing with.
Yes, we'll make sure that we can fulfill the accommodations that are necessary to for those teachers. So we are working with the REA as well as facilities to make sure that whether it's in their own building or a district facility itself, that there will be a physical location for those remote teachers to work out of.
Okay, so none of our teachers are teaching from home. Okay, the point was made about achievement. And I think this concerns me a little, and I I don't know where we go with it. This is down the road, end of year. To be quite honest, we socially promote now. We say it's in the best interest of the child to move them forward. If we have students who are truly not participating and truly not learning, are we going to continue with that practice for this situation just because? Or, I mean, I mean, are are we truly going to hold students accountable? We did not in the spring. I know we're saying we're going to take attendance, we're going to be testing, we're going to look for achievement. But I want to know, as a board member, at the end of the day, if they don't participate and they don't learn and they don't, they aren't ready to go to the next grade, that they aren't just automatically promoted to the next grade because of how old they are, I think that that is a concern for me. Hi, Ms. Detman, you got anything?
Sure, I wasn't quite sure. It's hard for me to navigate.
Yeah, I get it.
And also, there's a dog barking in my neighborhood. So I think there's a couple of important things for us to to consider when framing this conversation. And one of them is just the incredible impact of learning loss from the spring and what that looks like moving forward. And so how we've always defined things, you know, benchmarks at a particular point in time are not just changing for us, they're changing around the nation and around the world. And I think our educational system is going to continue to adjust and right-set kind of expectations based on this disruption that is not unique to us in our district. The second thing that I would say is, yes, we expect learners to be fully engaged, whether you are in an in-person model, a hybrid model, or a remote model. We do expect that that students are fully engaged in their educational work, just like they would be in person in a regular school year. And so we're still developing kind of the details of those systems and how we're going to ensure that there's clarity of communication on those expectations. We're going to be taking attendance, we'll be monitoring work completion, we'll be monitoring student progress. And we have lots of, you know, digital tools that are going to help us do that clearly and consistently across the district. And, you know, I I don't know that I'm I'm ready to have a conversation about, you know, retention and what that would look like. I think we need to continue to learn about how education in general is going to be responding this year and what our goals are. And I think primarily as students return to school, whether that's in person or remotely, the first thing we're going to do is get to know them again and get to know kind of where their levels are so that we can do the appropriate amount of scaffolding to ensure that there's rigorous grade level instruction happening in the student's intended grade level. So, you know, we're still going to learn about how this is all going to impact our long-term decisions for kids. But yes, absolutely, we do expect full engagement, we expect attendance, we'll be taking attendance. And 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 we hope that, you know, through the digital tools, we're going to have strong partnerships with families as well. There's a lot on on families that have opted into remote learning. A lot of support is going to be needed to ensure that everyone is clear on their role in supporting student learning.
Well, and that is our job as a district, to be clear in our expectations. There are benchmarks for different grade levels. Are they, it's not just did you show up on screen or did you click in or we saw you were on your device? And I worry when you say, well, we're going to right-set. Sometimes I think we could wrong-set as well because is the whole world going to be just everybody a year behind? That remains to be seen. So, but there needs to be consequences if people don't participate and if they are on, don't take advantage of the opportunities that we're trying to provide by either remote or in-person. So.
I think that's where the choice comes in, that you've selected the instructional model that you believe that as a family you can support and be fully engaged in and.
But I don't think everybody's selecting because they can fully support it. I think there are a lot of other reasoning going into it. It might be, you know, concern for another family member. Even though that family does not have the ability to support their student, it's the the concern about the coming into the building overrides the educational concern. And so they didn't make the choice necessarily just because they knew they could do it. They, and and that is apparent. I mean, look at our levels, we thought for sure. And do we post online somewhere what the breakdown is of our schools and who's the percentage? But as a as a board member, and I look at those and I see that some of the lower socioeconomic, you know, high levels of low socioeconomic students in the school, there's a large number choosing remote that I think would benefit. I mean, that was the whole equity issue, right? We thought that they were the ones most who needed to be in the buildings. And yet we're finding across the country, people are finding that with remote, with these blended models, that it's more of the parents who have the ability to support their children, who are sending their children to school. And it surprises me. And I don't know why it shouldn't now that I've thought, you know, thought things through. But I I do worry for for our schools especially. We don't have all the numbers in, I realize that. But, you know, our Lewis Lemon, our McIntosh, our Conklin, all the schools that we really want to see those students face-to-face because we feel that we can make, as Mr. Connor said, a greater impact with these elementary students when we're face-to-face. And yet those are the students who are, a larger percentage are choosing to stay home. I'm going to end with masks. I used to end with cell phones, now I'll end with masks. And my comment is this. I've actually heard about teachers who have. said that they're unwilling to wear a mask in the classroom if they're teaching in a classroom. And so I would like to know from our, you know, what, what kind of disciplinary action happens with that. But more so, I would like everybody to know what kind of consequences there are for students. This is in the handbook, I realize that, but let's state it. How imperative it is that we have people who do follow the rules, using their masks, with, you know, very few exceptions. I think that we had the whole face shield with the speech language sort of situation, but still maintaining distance. But what is it we're going to do to really reinforce and make sure that students and staff are not only wearing them, but they're covering their nose and their mouth? It's not hanging around their chin or over their mouth like I see all over when I'm out. What is it we're going to do to, to really get compliance with the mask issue? Because I think that if we're going to have, if we're going to have face-to-face, that's an important question and a, and something that the, the families who chose face-to-face want to know that we're pushing compliance. So I don't know who takes that one.
I, I can start. You know, when it comes to students, we have Mrs. Heit Carter that's working with a group to really talk about how there can be safety first, but progressive discipline in place. But these are going to be things where students are going to be removed from the classroom as a part of the potential consequences. Obviously, we're going to try to strike the proper balance between meeting the learning needs of the students, but safety will come first in those protocols as they roll out. And the same will be true with staff. You know, with anything, there is progressive discipline, but it will not be tolerated by staff or students. These are not optional rules, and these protocols will need to be followed in order to keep everyone safe. So there will be continued and ongoing guidance that provide details to that. But on a high level, it will not be tolerated. And in-person attendance at some point will not be an option if after progressive discipline and, and other smaller interventions fail, that ultimately would be the outcome, because we can't have one endangering the many.
Okay. Thank you. I used my share of time. Is there any other board member that has an additional question that came to mind that they'd like an opportunity to ask before we move on? June, I did like your, your comment that education is really essential. And our teachers are basically essential workers. And I think about all the, the first responders and hospital workers and everybody else and how important they were for the health of people, but, but how important our teachers are for the cognitive health of our students.
Jude.
All right, here.
Jude, I did have one more thing. I've had a ton of these conversations with teachers and community members and administrators, and I will jump on the applause for the administration for the amount of effort and work they've put into this. This has been really difficult. But every intelligent conversation that I've had about this subject has included the phrase, "I don't know." And I think that that has been really telling, because those people who are willing to admit that, it also are stating they're looking at a really big picture. And they are seeing how this issue is going to impact everybody and trying to find a solution that perfectly fits almost 29,000 students, 2,000 teachers, a ton of other staff, is, it is just an impossible task to please everybody. But we had a really neat discussion just a few minutes ago about expectations. And it occurs to me that that might be one of the things we want to focus on as we might consider more remote learning, is we set out with help from the state, a certain level of expectations last semester that were in no way demanding. We can choose to set expectations that are substantially more demanding in this upcoming semester, or God forbid, year, that might set forth a path for greater success. Plus, with the tools that we have acquired, including the ones we, you know, talked about at the beginning of this meeting, it seems like we actually have those tools to create that accountability to match those expectations. But just wanted to throw in those two things.
Okay. Thank you, David. And thank you also from me to the administration, not only for what you've done, but what lies ahead, because it's not over yet. All right. We have no public speakers tonight. So if there are no further comments or agenda recommendations by the board, I'll take a motion and a second to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Michael, and I think second by Anthony. Or David, okay. Sorry, couldn't tell. All in favor?
Aye.
Please signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. See you all next week. Thank you very much. Good night.